All right, welcome to our August meeting. Call the meeting order, it is 6:03. Judy, you can take a roll. And that takes us to number two, approval of consent agenda, A through G. Go ahead Bryce.
Okay, um, scroll down. Enclosures. What page are those?
You got a page number?
I'm not sure what page you're on.
Okay.
Same page.
Same page. I just feel like Judy's trying to force me into this one.
What?
Judy's laughing because she doesn't have her Chromebook.
That's right.
All right, uh, yeah, what did we say? Um, we're catching up on a few things, there's some bigger ones there. Out Top Electric, that's two months. Worth of bills, that fourteen thousand, one sixty-three. That's not, uh, that's not one month. And just, you know, beginning of the year things, lots of subscriptions. Down there on the list, we usually try to get those paid upfront. As we get started back. Biggest one down there, about three quarters way, number fifty-four, that's the insurance. And like we've mentioned before, you know, that, that went up nearly thirty thousand from last year. That's a big expense.
Just, I know this is a little off topic, have they said anything about it going up with the prices?
Uh, we're not that far into all of that. I just, I know that they have all the claim information, but, um, I mean, we haven't made a claim in probably six, seven years at least. So, we'll just have to wait and see. Like I said, those are, those are all just kind of beginning of the year expenses and things. Uh, unless there was any specific questions about any of those.
Do we send our asbestos somewhere to get anyone inspected, or is that?
Yes, we do. Um, we've started sending them to Enid.
So we switched, or is that?
Yeah, we're sending them to a place in Alpha, but, um, we've decided to go to Enid. Um, felt like they were doing a little bit better job picking up on some things and keeping up with it. And so, um, they've actually caught a few things that we needed to get fixed. And so it's, it is costing us a little more right now, but I feel like that's because we're trying to catch up on a few things.
Right.
Building funds is paid fourteen. And, uh, again, there's, there's several things there that, uh, kind of beginning of the year things, uh, dial security systems, that's our monitoring. They monitor all of our fire alarm systems there. L.A. electric supply, um, we're in the process of switching out some of our older lights to LEDs. And so, we're, as we need those things, that's what we're replacing them with. So, kind of buying those in batches right now. And then just precision testing laboratories, that's our annual asbestos.
Hasn't changed, Judy?
No. And sure we waited, that's just paying supplies that we did, kind of did things finished up there. Uh, and then you can see on page sixteen, uh, Luckin Bill, that is for the walk-in freezer that we had fixed this summer, nineteen thousand, eight forty-five. And so, we did get that fixed, they've had to come out a few times and kind of find you some things. But they're taking care of all that. And I think we're, we're good to go there.
Oh, we're still on these, the things that I usually write on those lines for all of that, towards the front, in front of that, they'll be this encroach report. That has all descriptions of where everything is on it.
How do we see that? Is there a way to go faster? It appears too slow. Is this touchable? I'm scared to touch it. That's fine, okay. I see it.
Treasuries report, unless Amanda must have jumped in there, there's some clerical things that, uh, trying to work with software. We need to bring that up or stay away from that subject with Amanda. So, we're going back and forth with the software people and just getting some things lined out. So, I don't have that for you this time, but as soon as we get it, I'll make sure that that information gets out to you. Activity fund report. Anything there Kendra? Just getting ready to start the year. Okay, we have several, uh, activity fund fundraising requests. Try to get as many of these at the beginning of the year, uh, in for this meeting, uh, as we can. So, I'll just go through those. The junior class, this class is tennis, fifty-fifty drawing in the rodeo for several years now. They requested that again. Football, fan pledge, and then Sonic fundraiser night to be determined. We did the Sonic fundraiser night last year, just don't have a date for that yet. Fan pledge is, uh, it's something new, we're gonna try. And basically, the kids are gonna have to come up with a list of contacts and, and call and ask for pledges to make donations to our program. Help purchase equipment, but the kids have to, they have to be the ones to call and do that. So, actually Kendra's niece did that, and, uh, they raised, I think, what did they end up raising?
They ended up raising about twelve thousand dollars in less than an hour.
Yeah.
Because they kind of did like the groups and they kind of had their own little challenges with doing things, so.
So, this is first time, um, we're gonna do that, but we're gonna do it with the junior high football, or the junior high and high school teams. So, we're gonna see how, see how that goes, doesn't cost us anything to do it. We get eighty-five percent of everything that's raised, so. Like I said, we'd like to give that a try. Elementary, um, helping hands, bingo night. Those are, I think, are those both things we did last year? Are these new? New, okay. Mini cheer camp for cheerleading. Basketball, banner sales and discount cards, that's something that they do each year. Of course, our sophomore class, um, selling t-shirts for all the different activities that go on throughout the year. The academic team, uh, would like to sell candy to help raise some money so that they can buy some t-shirts and things like that. And then just general athletics. Cherokee chief here, uh, we'd like to set up an online store, just with some generic, uh, Cherokee stuff. Equipment, these shirts, so that won't take away from the sophomores, but, um, hats and hoodies and other things like that. And then possibly doing some Cherokee chief, just water bottles that could be purchased. Kids could use here at school, hopefully, some of that a little bit later, but, um, they would be fit the rules that way. Uh, that's an idea that we have there. So, like I said, I'm sure we'll have more next month, but, um, these are the ones, beginning of the year, that we'll get most of these activities up, up going.
Sure, making a recommendation that we approved, I guess all these, you don't, you're not questioning anything or have any concerns on any of these activities?
No, Mr. Patterson and Mrs. Patterson and I have all went over these and kind of discussed them. I said, most of these are things that we have done in the past, there's just one or two new ones there.
Right. Just scrolling through here. So, one class controls the t-shirts with Cherokee chief print, that?
Well, the sophomores have always been kind of the ones that sell. That's kind of their big fundraiser throughout the year, so that they can generate enough money to do prom. You know, the junior year or so. Five men here, that's the way it's been.
All right, did you have anything else you wanted to go through, uh, A through G on, any of that stuff, Bryce?
Uh, first questions.
Were there any questions on A through G, concerns? Do I have a motion? Does Ray made a motion to approve, do I have a second? Heather's second, Judy?
Little Phil?
Yes.
Good one?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Gibson?
Yes.
Collins?
Yes.
Number three, principal reports.
Not much going on except for just getting ready for school. Teachers have been up there working a lot to get their rooms ready. Our theme this year is plant kindness, so lots of fun plans and lots of fun plans with that. I'm not really sure where numbers will be at, we've lost a few families, but we've got two new students today and they're just exchanging, so.
Same thing, uh, we had a normal last week, had a good turnout. Pretty much everybody got to come get their schedule, get their Chromebooks and a lot of stuff that we do. Normally doing the first day of school, so that should make the first day of school a little bit more, uh, hopefully, less hectic. Same thing, we had a large graduating class of seniors, our eighth grade class wasn't as big coming in, so our high school numbers are probably gonna be down some. But we have had some new normals in sixth grade class coming up as well later, so, uh, we're gonna be down, I think, few students, but not many, pretty close to same, six through twelve. But, had a good day, first day of day, the teachers come back with incentives and TV, so, looking forward to it right here.
Number four, discussion and vote to approve the eleventh and twelfth grade mathematics and science courses taken from the career technology center for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year.
The, in part of our agreement with them, the math, as it says, math and science classes that they offer over there, uh, this is just something that has to go through our board and approve that so that we can transcript and get, get those students to present that and cheer.
Any questions on that? If not, I'll make a motion to approve, you want the twelfth grade mathematics and science courses? Do I have a second? Heather's a second, Judy?
Little Phil?
Yes.
Good one?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Gibson?
Yes.
Collins?
Yes.
Number five, discussion of vote to approve the junior high, high school handbook changes for the twenty-three, twenty-four.
Just a few changes this year, I know last year we, we implemented our semester test exemption policy. This year I added if a student has an unexcused absence in any class. So, if they don't come back for lunch, or they decide they're gonna sleep in and parents don't call them in, then, then they're gonna have to take all their semester tests if we don't have notification of where they're at, if they're not here. I mean, in the past, I thought, you know, I don't know about that because students can't control their parents, but students can learn responsibility to get their parents to call. They have twenty-four hours according to our handbook to call and get an unexcused absence excused, so that's one thing I changed. The other thing, I know in the past, and it really in the handbook, it covers this, I just want to point out, uh, there's a new law going to effect in November. I don't know if you guys know the farm permit, um, students who are fourteen can drive, which I think is gonna be a great deal in the future. But for right now, I don't want to have to try to police out junior high kids, so we're gonna have a closed campus for eighth grade. That way they're not sneaking out the front, trying to go drive. Parents can still call and check their kiddos out, we still have order ahead lunches, um, but I'm gonna close the campus for, for sixth, seventh, and eighth grade. Some, some people aren't gonna like that, but, like I said, they can still come check their kids out for lunch if they want to every day. It's just, I think right now would be a little bit safer until all the rules and regulations are in place and we know how that's going to work. The other thing, just kind of a housekeeping thing, it hadn't been updated for years. Uh, well, I did update the graduation checklist, there's links, the handbook will be online, you can click on it and go see the checklist. Some of those are updated for the newest ones. High school honor graduates, I did have to change that because since we do have an advanced math class in eighth grade now, uh, it said nine through twelfth grades. Well, your eighth grade math class will count as one of your four, you still have to take three units in high school or six semesters, I put that in there. I don't want juniors sneaking in to take a college job until Christmas and then not take math for a year and a half. So, I put six semesters in high school, so you can still get your four math credits, but it's eight through twelve now rather than just nine through twelve. And then, the last thing was prom, uh, I don't know how long ago they set a prom budget of six thousand dollars. Just to kind of keep everybody on the same playing surface. With the cost of things now, especially food, um, we talked about feeding a hundred to a hundred and fifty students, possibly fifty to eighty adults. Just to feed them alone, it's gonna cost you three, four thousand. So, that doesn't leave much left for decorations. Last year they did it for less than six, but they repurposed, repurposed a whole lot of stuff. If we don't have the decorations they want for prom, they're gonna have to buy decorations, so I thought we need to raise that from six to eight thousand. So, they don't have to spend it, a lot of them won't spend it, but it's there just in case, so.
So, that's the increase for what?
Eight thousand, yeah. I just figured, you, it's probably spend half of that in food alone. When you're thinking about feeding a hundred, fifty, two hundred. So, I think that is all. I changed, that's all my highlights that I see right now.
Any questions on handbook changes? Decoration concerns? All right, I'll make a motion to approve, do I have a second?
Second.
Heather's second, Judy?
Little Phil?
Yes.
Good one?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Gibson?
Yes.
Collins?
Yes.
All right, discussion of vote to approve or not to approve the elementary handbook changes for the twenty-three, twenty-four.
I didn't have any changes except for personnel update. I updated my school personnel, but I didn't have any.
Oh, okay. I updated those as well, I just.
So, are you looking for an approval, or is that nothing?
I think, I think it's good practice that we approve the handbook each year.
I see.
I don't know that it's necessary, I just think it's probably good practice that we do it.
So, go ahead, go ahead and refer back on. Um, make a motion to approve the elementary handbook changes for the twenty-three, twenty-four. Do I have a second?
I'll take it.
Curtis second? Judy?
Little Phil?
Yes.
Good one?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Gibson?
Yes.
Collins?
Yes.
If I could revisit my principal's report, one thing, Mr. Schottbacher and I have, ha, on the water bottles. One thing we are gonna do this year, students can bring water bottles, but they're gonna have to be clear. Uh, the last, the last couple of years, we've got to where they're bringing all sorts of different carriers for their liquids. And that's what it's turned into, some bring coffee, some bring pops, and then they spill it and it makes mess. So, this year we're gonna go back to clear water bottles as far as, and it's not really in the handbook, it's just one of those things some people don't like, but, I asked my teachers today, how many of them got to take a water bottle class with them when they were in elementary and high school, and nobody, nobody raised their hand, so. It, it may not be everyone's favorite, but we will be abide here.
All right, that takes us to number seven, discussion and vote to approve adjunct teaching status for the twenty-three, twenty-four.
Three of these are the exact same, um, adjunct that we did last year. Of course, Brett Meyer is at NWTC, uh, and then you cut more for one hour chemistry. Mr. Pruitt, uh, gets to get an art credit in that shop class. And then, uh, this year, this is a yearbook, this is a yearbook class with photography.
There's some of them that we put in called photography, and she has to have the art certification, so we're not too sure.
So, that's what we're doing there with, with those.
Any questions, Mayor? Motion?
Make a motion to approve.
Does Ray made a motion to approve, do I have a second? Rose? Heather's second, Judy?
Little Phil?
Yes.
Good one?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Gibson?
Yes.
Collins?
Number eight, board to consider take action to the employment of Stephen L. Smith Corporation as financial consultants to the school district for fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four.
Uh, Stephen L. Smith is, uh, consults and manages our bonds and all those things. So, I just recommend we continue that with that.
Questions? Make a motion to approve, do I have a second?
I'll take it.
Curtis second? Judy?
Little Phil?
Yes.
Good one?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Gibson?
Yes.
Collins?
Yes.
Number nine, discussion vote to approve or not to approve the district's level services program agreement with COSA for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year.
Something that we've done for, uh, the last few years. With COSA, uh, it's fifteen hundred dollars a year, and that gives, uh, there is a long list of professional development that we qualify for, that we wouldn't have to pay as we go, mainly for us as administrators, uh, to use that. There's also some staff PD that we can take advantage of, uh, through that program as well. And they keep expanding what they offer each year, so I feel like the volume of it has increased for us. But, uh, I would like to continue and do that again this year with that.
Judy? Questions there? Do I have a motion? Does Ray made a motion, do I have a second? Heather's second, Judy?
Little Phil?
Yes.
Good one?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Gibson?
Yes.
Collins?
Yes.
Proposed executive session on number ten to discuss personnel to include salaries and contracts for school year twenty-three, twenty-four. Make a motion to convene and declare session, do I have a second? Does Ray's second, Judy?
Little Phil?
Yes.
Good one?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Gibson?
Yes.
Collins?
Six twenty-six. All right, Jen C., make a motion to acknowledge return to open session? Do I have a second?
I'll take it.
Does Ray?
Little Phil?
Yes.
Good one?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Gibson?
Yes.
Collins?
Yes.
Six thirty-eight. Go ahead, does there any?
During executive session, we discuss personnel to include salaries and contracts for school year twenty-three, twenty-four.
Number eleven, discussion vote to employ or not to employ Shannon Reed as a paraprofessional for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year.
Uh, I would recommend that we do hire Shannon Reed.
I'll make a motion to approve the implement of Shannon Reed, do I have a second? Does Ray's second, Judy?
Little Phil?
Yes.
Good one?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Gibson?
Yes.
Collins?
Yes.
Number twelve, superintendent's report.
Like they said, you know, not much going on, just getting ready to start school.
Yes.
I thought that was kind of the right way to put it, so, that's all we have going on this week, so. But it has been a busy couple of weeks, uh, just to update everybody, we did, um, have a, a pipe burst and, and have quite a bit of water and flooding, uh, all the way from in here around that desk. Uh, we have water running clear down out of the back door of the kitchen and the for yours. Uh, I'm not sure how many gallons of gallons of water it was, but I've spoken to the city on how we can handle that, and they're working with us there, so. But, uh, as far as damages go, we really, we really don't have anything significant. Just the cleanup and the drying out is gonna be, uh, the biggest part, which, uh, we went through a company, CCR. Uh, they were here by noon that day, the leak was discovered at about five forty-five that morning. So, uh, we had about ten minutes up here pushing water for those four and a half, five hours, uh, and got a lot of it out. The carpet and the three classrooms on the south end, and some in the fine arts room, uh, and there was wet. But, like I said, we gotta dry it out quick enough, uh, that the glue is still sticking. And so, uh, with that company coming in and putting the dehumidifiers in there and pulling all the moisture out of everything, out of the cabinets, uh, they pulled off the base trim around the wooden cabinets, cabinets, drilled holes in them. So, I, I think we're in really good shape. We still have one down the hallway by the gym entrance, it did seep in there, about two feet is all, but just as add precaution, that's why it's still there running and blowing hot dry air, uh, on that, and, uh, we should be fine there as far as that goes. So, we really, like I said, uh, I feel like we kind of escaped any major issues because we didn't have any drywall or, I mean, it's all center block and brick. So, uh, we didn't have, you know, that part of it, and the cabinets, uh, did get a little bit wet, but I think we got it in there quick enough and got it dried out, but, uh, I think we'll be in pretty good shape. So, I'll keep everybody updated as far as where we're at with the insurance company and going through that process as we move forward, but, uh, talking of wood, as bad as it was, it could have been a lot worse for us, so, uh, just wanted to come in, you know, Bucky and Billy and Mike and those guys were getting on as quick as they did too, because they, they, they got up here and got after it, uh, knew what to do and get everything shut down quickly, so, uh, they did a great job. Another update on a long overdue insurance, but our bus that we had an accident last March, finally through extensive conversations, we happened to go around and, and basically do it ourselves, uh, we got a check to repair our bus, so it is being repaired. The other person in the accident, their insurance is paying for that, so it's in Enid, uh, it's gonna get fixed, and hopefully we'll get that bus back, uh, after those repairs were made and get it back in service and on the road, so, um, I just, I couldn't believe that it was taking that. on the road, so, um, I just, I couldn't believe that it was taking that long to get it done, so, hopefully.
They gave you an estimate of like how, how, how long it's gonna take to get it back on the road?
I didn't even ask.
Yeah, just glad they got.
Didn't really wanna hear, I was just glad that we were getting a check for it finally to get it fixed. Uh, so, uh, anyway, uh, parking lot over around the field house and East Side of Elementary are sealed and repainted, and those look really good, really nice, so I'm glad we were able to do that, stay up with things like that. Other than that, like I said, it's just, it's been very busy, uh, these last couple of weeks getting everything ready, as they mentioned, all the staff came back today for our first day of, uh, in-service, all our new teachers seem to be, uh, just fitting right in and hitting the ground running, uh, working in the rooms and just getting everything ready, so, um, like they said, I, I'm excited too, I think we've got a great group of teachers, uh, and staff and some great kids, um, just really looking forward to a great year this year.
All right, thanks Bryce. Um, thirteen, any new business?
No new business.
All right. Make a motion to adjourn, do I have a second? Heather's second, Judy?
Little Phil?
Yes.
Goodwin?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Gibson?
Yes.
Holland?